Into order for March. Very first. All three selectmen present. I mean, our administrator is present. According to the public, we have Mr. Lee Martel. And the video will be posted by Linda Nickerson. We also have the town moderator present tonight. Welcome.
Thank you.
And, okay, I have some minute meetings. Minute meeting minutes, gentlemen.
I'll make a motion to approve the March twenty-fourth meeting minutes as amended.
I second.
Okay, the regular meeting minutes, any discussion on those minutes, gentlemen?
Nope.
Very good job.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, Justin, I'm gonna give you a chance.
I was gonna do. I make a motion to approve the eight twenty-four non-public minutes on March twenty-fourth. I'll second Justin's motion.
And those are unsealed, gentlemen? Any other further discussion on those?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye. Mike?
And I'll make a motion to approve the March twenty-fourth of non-public minutes for eight thirty-eight.
And I'll second your motion. Which ones are those? One of the two should be sealed, I believe.
Um.
Those are the police ones that should be sealed.
No, they should not be sealed. It has had nothing to do with, um.
Not the police ones, the ones before, though.
That's one.
So that would be eight twenty-four is one?
You want to seal those?
Yeah, I think we should.
Uh, and for the reason why? Just, uh, I. Okay, take a peek. I don't know why.
I think that's a good idea. Cause we had talked about that because it's a.
We talked about sealing in the meeting minutes, Mike, because we don't wanna make people aware of it.
Okay.
For, for the time being.
Or it may have legal implications, too.
Yeah.
Okay, then I retract what I said during the discussion. Um, I'm gonna ask for a re-vote on those. Please, during the discussion, I said they were not.
I'll make an amendment to, um, amendment to reseal those minutes.
Okay. I'll second your amendment, I second your motion to seal the minutes of the eight twenty-four non-public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In the last seven minutes, we, uh, we're still in discussion phase for the last seven minutes. It was, uh, the second non-public. This was, uh, about, it was a hiring action, so I don't think they should be sealed. All in favor of the last?
Aye.
Aye. Here, any signatures from these three documents, gentlemen?
So, Mike, you made a motion on the eight thirty-eight minutes, Dave, you seconded?
No, the eight twenty-four minutes to seal those.
No, but they.
Oh, to, to, for the second motion, yes.
Yeah.
Correct.
Dave, Mike, and Dave.
Thank you, Dave. Okay. Let that be signed. Uh, we're waiting, we're opening for public comment.
Yep.
Yes, sir? From right up?
Yeah.
Say your name to the record?
John Carter, three hundred stock highway north.
Are you here as a town official or as a, or as a citizen?
As a citizen, uh, kind of both, I guess. First, congratulations, Justin.
Thank you.
On your, uh, your election, election results and everything. And I would like to, and I personally would like to thank the, your guidance and your support from Linda Landry, Fred Mullin, and the board of selectmen, you know, throughout the, the day, and it was, it was an experience.
Yeah, thank you. I think it went very well for the first big meeting.
Are you gonna stay with us now?
Absolutely.
I was gonna say, make me nervous.
I know, like, no, no resignation.
No, no, not at all. Again, just wanted to thank you, and, you know, I think it went well. I enjoyed it, and.
I think it's, I think it's really, I, I've learned over the years, it's a teamwork effort.
Absolutely.
And the thing is, uh, to put it all in one person's, I'm not fair. And it's all about teamwork.
Yeah, and I wanna thank Woody as well. Woody and his crew and everyone in.
It works out good with them coming, wouldn't you agree, to set up and you can kinda think about your layout and do other things? Well.
Yeah.
You know, you're not concentrating on building every item, and we pay them to do it, and they enjoy doing it, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they take pride in, in what they do. You know, it's like anything you do in life, you know, take pride in what you do, so.
I know when I first became selectman, we were taking up some of those, um, issues, and we learned, we stepped back a little bit each year from them to try and let them have that space and time to do their thing, and.
Yeah.
Cause the setup is actually your domain, and we were like, put not hands in the pot, and it doesn't work well that way.
Right, yeah. And like I say, even the, from the supervisor, the checklist and everything, and everyone was very supportive, so. And I enjoyed it, it was kind of, kind of neat, you know?
Yeah, I think it went good, the, the whole process, and, uh, you know, I had, I had somebody commented back, John, John cut you off real quick when, you know, when you were telling them, oh, hold on, David, or whatever, and I said, you don't know John, that's how John is.
Yeah, yeah.
You're not taking that out of John, I'm pretty black and white.
Yeah.
I said, I wasn't offended, I worked with him for eighteen years on the zoning board, that's just how it is.
It was eighteen years?
Yeah.
My work.
Wow, that's amazing. But as I, I still brag about that, one time, I saw two members talk about an issue, and there was this, the chairman came up to us and said, guys, don't you be talking out here, if you got anything to say, say it in here, otherwise, shut up!
Yeah, that's it, you know. Pretty black and white, so.
Exactly.
But.
No, I thought it went good, even through the, uh, the different things with, you know, having to, uh, not do part of that paving motion, that kinda went back and forth, and it was kind of great.
It was confusion on some wording, but I think we're gonna work that out.
Absolutely, yeah.
Cause the intent was, we know what the intent was.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I didn't think we'll have the issue, cause we're not gonna have that paving warrant anymore than we did the bond.
And I, and I sat down with Fred, you know, fifth, fifth quarter, you know, and, and again, and I love Fred, and, and he's, and I told him that I don't take criticism wrong at all, you know? And I, and it's not criticism.
It's constructive.
It's constructive criticism.
Exactly.
And thank you, Fred, and I'm gonna look into it and, you know, kinda come around, so.
And the thing is, I, I really like Joe Milliato, is, is helping.
Oh, yes.
As a coordinator for the, during the county part.
Yeah.
Uh, I like helping him, but I think, is he really runs that show?
Oh, yes, yeah, absolutely. And, um, and, and I'm not one to, excuse the expression, piss on the hydrant again.
He fills in so good, cause he does the, you know, the catalog, he's booked good, all day long, he fills in really good.
Absolutely, yeah, so, that was the purpose of my coming here tonight, thanking you all.
Thank you. And the thing is, we look forward to continuing and working with you.
Yeah, and I think, you know, come fall is gonna be even, um, more challenging.
Yeah.
You know, just in, in the election, never mind the, the town meeting and stuff. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Didn't you say you had two things, or was, uh, covered? Did I miss anything? I thought you said you had two things, official and unofficial.
No, I came as a, as, as an official, as moderator and as a citizen, but thank you.
Am I trying to miss something?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, uh, you know, the agenda. We have, um, we have five hundred dollars to accept.
I'll make a motion for that, Mike.
Okay.
I'll second. Oh, I'll read it first, Justin. I'll make a motion per R S A thirty-one, colon ninety-five, dash B, Roman numeral three, paragraph P, to accept five hundred dollars from Health Trust Wellness as a contribution to use at the discretion of the wellness coordinator.
And then it's done, white. And, uh, you second that?
Yes.
Okay, um, again, it's, uh, the money just for the public, the money's used at the discretion of the wellness coordinator for the purpose of incentivizing employees for wellness, campaigns about healthy eating, physical activity, healthy work environment, less stress levels, and more. And, uh, there's a minimum, they do one wellness campaign per year, she's done them in the past, and that's, it's like an extra benefit of the, of the, being part of the health wellness plan. So, all in favor of this motion?
Yep.
Takes that?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So be it, it's done. Okay, we have, um, last, this is continuation from last week, we had those pest control, um, services, uh, contra, proposals, and they were, they ranged a gamut from, uh, doing insects, uh, mice, snakes weren't on there. But, and sealing the building, and they went from high to low. I, I listened to some public comment last week. Now that spring is coming, the mice are going out to the fields, I'd say, I'm, I'm gonna recommend we do one service as an initial service to clean the building, and then maybe revisit that in the fall as they're coming to re-rehabitate the building again during the cold weather. I don't think, I think a whole year worth of service may be just a waste of money.
The only thing I thought is, um, if we did a year's worth of service on this building, and it takes care of ants and everything else.
But it, but.
Get it up to.
But ants been a problem.
Yeah, they have, absolutely. We have carpenter ants around the first door over there that we constantly, every year, spray with, uh, Raid.
Yeah, I was only talking to small ants, that's what they brought up, uh, at the last meeting, the smaller ants, so.
Yeah, those are usually in the bathroom coming through the.
Yeah, he was a lot of.
Okay, then I'll.
All building, it's gonna be nice to keep ants away from us, especially on the one.
I'll stand corrected on that. Okay, I'll stand.
Justin had mentioned something last week where the, um, estimate from the company that he solicited was gonna seal the whole.
Right, the se, the ceiling, um, that's about a twelve hundred dollar additional cost.
Well, that's overall, isn't it?
Yeah, it was like twelve ninety-five.
Twelve ninety-five.
And it's going around sealing as much of the building as he see, saw fit, I mean.
They basically, there's a whole list of, I can read it if you like.
I've already read it, but.
They seal twelve, uh, return corners, seal four utility line chases, seal six stairway returns, rodent proof exterior basement window well, well, well trimmed, trench and screen front side steps landing to eliminate access from underneath, seal rodent proof, seal plate gaps as needed, install snap traps in basement if desired by client to remove resident mice sealed inside.
I just thought if everything's heading out in the spring, and we have to do that, it's gonna be a less chance of stuff coming in the fall, and if we have that full year service, so what's his total like if you did the?
It'd be, cause the.
Go, go ahead.
It's, it's, that's from Manhattan, okay?
Yeah.
So it'd be about twelve ninety-five to for sealing, and then to do insects, and he basically broke it down into two, two areas.
Yeah, one had mice and one didn't.
Correct.
Cause I think we were, I had talked to him about just infecting the mice without using, you know, bait stations, cause that's how every pest company does it, J P N, the medical plan on putting bait stations out, and I know there was some concern of putting bait stations, cause if they eat the bait, bird gets the mouse, and.
I'm not worried.
So, but he has essentially a insect.
Get rid of these, saying you gotta get rid of, you gotta get rid of the problems.
Three, three hundred thirty dollars and two hundred thirty-five dollars. Uh, two hundred thirty-five dollars is for, um, uh, he does ants, wasps, horn, uh, hornets and rodents for interior basement offices, common areas, exterior building, perimeters, and leaves. That's a, uh, two, uh, total, uh, two hundred thirty-five dollars. And the second, and the second.
Is that a full year's worth or just one time?
That is the initial visit, and then it goes down to.
Go ahead.
I don't know.
One hundred thirty-five dollars per service investment.
And that's a quarterly one, so that would be one payment of the two thirty-five, and then three of the other one, which equates to, I think, somewhere around.
So you have one thirty-five with the other one times three?
Well, thirty-five times three, and two thirty-five.
So that's four hundred and five, and then.
Then, then for the sealing of the building, it would be twelve ninety-five.
So you get six forty on that one, Mike, if you wanna put a total on that.
So that would be the year, one whole year of.
Correct.
It's just treatment only, not the ceiling.
The ceiling would be twelve ninety-five.
Yeah, give me that one there, what's in that, what's the heading on that one, Mike?
This one is just, uh, exterior perimeter leaves, I believe it's, uh, exterior perimeter spray of control of ants, crawling insects, and wasps and hornets, this, just, just a, um, insect one, not separated from the.
And the other one is mice, too.
The other one has mice and insects.
Okay, so you're six forty and twelve ninety-five.
I would say we disregard this one completely.
Yeah, it doesn't have the rodents.
Right, the rodents is the principal problem.
Yeah.
Okay, and versus the other one? This is JP pests?
They didn't give us a bid on sealing.
Correct.
Like Manhattan did.
They were a thousand twenty-nine dollars for the yearly service.
And, and they serviced every month, which, again, we really don't need it during the summer months, but they're not really around, so that's why.
I'm leaning towards Manhattan based upon the ceiling pro, uh, recommendation, and the fact they do, uh, both mice and the insects and, for a reasonable cost.
If we do Manhattan, I would like to talk with him about what he thinks is the premium month to seal, cause he may wanna wait like an additional thirty days or something before he seals, let everything finish getting out. It's still a little raw, so.
I think he, in that twelve ninety-five, he was gonna put snap traps downstairs to kinda like catch that one, bang, bang up initial, seal up the building, and get everything that's in there.
Those are just the remainders, cause you always say the stragglers.
Yeah. So.
All right, so.
I, so, I'm leaning towards Manhattan.
Yep, I'm from Manhattan.
I'll make a motion to accept the Manhattan bids for sealing the, um, building and for the ant and mice and insect bid, plus six forty for the year.
Which will be a quarterly treatment and inspection.
Quarterly service contract.
After the initial one, yeah.
I second.
Okay, any further discussion on this?
Nope.
I'm gonna open up for comments from the public, cause last week, we had good comments from the public, any comment?
Is that, you said it's quarterly for the ants?
Yes.
I have mine, as I said, do, done twice a year, never have any, I used to have them, since they started, twice a year, never had any problems, ever. And they're the carpenter ants that you're talking about. They also tell you never to spray them with Raid or anything if you find them.
Okay. We'll see what they, I said we try them off for one year.
I think it's one of those things, he services my.
I have a question here, too. John, you have a question?
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Did we just decide just to do the treatment and not the ceiling?
No.
Seal two.
So the, so your motion was to set the bid for six forty, but did I hear?
Both bids.
Both bids?
And twelve month.
So the total bid is nineteen thirty-five, two of them, just to clarify.
Yes.
Can I, so is that, you said that's quarterly?
No, that, they're gonna come in with, there's your trade.
So that price is, they'll come in quarterly, okay, now I understand.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah, okay.
That's not a.
All right, I thought that was quarterly.
No, 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 no.
Hey, that's why I was questioning it.
No, so his first service is two thirty-five, and in three months, his next service is one thirty-five.
So in other words, once he's sealed the building up.
Yeah.
It's, uh, six forty for the whole year, um, for all the insects, mice, bees, everything, so.
I get it.
And to be honest, he sprays it as needed, he does, he does my house and a few others in town, and it's as needed, so, yeah, he's coming quarterly, but he may not spray the ants as, you know, four times a year.
Right, right.
He doesn't, he, he's very well versed in knowledge of insects and everything like that, he's been in the industry for many years, so he's, you know, I back what he tells me, so.
They return if the, if you see an issue, they'll return.
Correct, if we have any problems, you call him, and he'll come and take care of it.
Any more questions, please?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lean, if you could execute on that contract.
Do I need an initial letter?
No.
I think it needs one signature, doesn't it? You wanna sign it, Justin?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think there's a signature in the bottom.
Okay, Lean, you're up, you're gonna, uh, walk us through the first quarter expenses and revenues.
Okay, um. Just a minute, babe.
Okay. She's, she's got spreadsheets, gentlemen, you may wanna get them up.
I'm done. What are we on?
Revenues and expenses.
Looks like it's Justin.
Yep.
Expenses are a lot thicker than the revenues.
Yeah. Okay, you want me to start, or you want me?
Please.
You want, I'll set.
Yeah, I'll do this after.
Okay, um, so this is, I, I try to provide the board with, um, quarterly expenses and revenues, so that you can see where we are as far as, uh, our anticipated, um, number for the revenues, and then whether we're on spot for our expenses, so, um, it's still early in the year, but, um, I'll go to the revenues first. Um, we have no land use change checks, but we do have about four pending, so that you'll start seeing some activity there.
What's average or per use, or when you say four pending?
Eighteen thousand.
Yeah, but then fifty percent goes to the conservation, so.
Okay.
So, I, I anticipate getting this whole budget in by the end of the year.
Okay.
Um, again, it's still pretty early in the year. The business and licenses for vehicle registration, the March is not exported in there, so we're currently at, um, one twenty-five, eight fifty-two, but I did ask the deputy for the, uh, revenues through today, and they have an additional hundred and four thousand forty-one dollars coming in for March, so you'll see that number jump up when we do our next revenues, that would be the bottom line, twelve one twenty-five plus a hundred and four, oh forty-one. Again, this is early on, but it's.
Where are you seeing a hundred and four?
On page two, I'm, I'm telling you about it, I haven't merged it in here. Cause tomorrow's the first, and they won't give me their report, their export until April first.
I thought you said the one twenty-five is new, but you're adding it to one oh four, I don't see one oh four anymore.
I'm adding, I'm telling you that I need to add to her revenues here, shown on page two.
So one twenty-five is what, is for two months, and then you have another one oh four?
Correct, yeah. January, February, the one twenty-five, eight fifty-two.
Gotcha.
And then we're gonna, if I run this again next week, you'll see an additional hundred and four thousand oh forty-one get added to that. Uh, we've only received the one highway block grant, uh, we won't see the flood control, um, rooms and meals and other state funding till the end of the year. Um, I did, I entered all of the receipts, um, Woody is, um, I've been seeing an awful lot of, um.
Excuse me, Lean, can you go back, your highway block grant?
Yeah.
You budgeted for ninety, you said we saw the first one.
Which is.
Twenty, are they quarterly?
Quarterly, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're actually overlapping, it's two months last year and two months this year, they go from July first to June thirty-first.
Okay, so you think we'll hit the ninety?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did just enter, um, February and March's revenues, and for recycling, you can see he's, all he need, we budgeted for twenty thousand, we've already collected eighteen thousand dollars. Just this, today, I entered in about twelve thousand dollars worth of recycling for metals and whatnot, he's had a really hard, a, a big, a good year, a good month for February, March.
Very good.
Very good, yeah. So we'll definitely beat that budget. And everything else is.
Pretty, pretty flat, yeah.
I did, I did wanna point out the recycling income is really going well so far.
I wonder how many months, as he cumulates, that he doesn't make a run every month for, uh, metals, so, you know.
I don't know, maybe the bathroom.
I should ask him what ever comes in.
Yeah.
On the planning and zoning?
Yeah.
We've already hit our revenue allowance on that?
Well, we don't put any money in there, um, only because it's really a pass-through. Uh, when we collect fees from applicants, there are, uh, expenses that we have to cover, but it has.
And we've already hit the number that we had last year?
Oh, yeah, we could say that, she's had, just had three applications in the last, like, three weeks, a two lot subdivision, a nine lot subdivision, and then, um, it'll, uh, there's a third one.
Thirteen lot?
Yeah.
School, the school department probably loves that. Okay. Expenses now?
And then expenses, again, this is still early on in the year, but I like to give this to the board, so you can see where you're at for, um, departments, and more so in the third quarter, you'll be able to really get a, a good idea of where we stand under the, um, so these should pretty much be between eighty percent, seventy-five and eighty percent, unless they, something that we don't touch until the end of the year, which would still be at a hundred percent. One item that I want to point out is the government buildings, how the board has approved, uh, a number of different, um, expenses.
Did you include the library, I mean, the, uh, town hall restoration money in there?
I did, um, so that's where we're at right now, fifty-two percent.
Okay.
And then I'll add this nineteen thirty-five to that current, uh, expenses.
Right.
Yeah. And we've spent about fifty percent of our government buildings so far.
I, most, most departments are fine. Fire department did some, uh, they're a little bit under, over, a little bit overspent, not much.
Zoning, I mean, excuse me, legal's gonna be probably close to spent at the end of that year, for sure. Zoning's at fifty percent, board assesses at ninety-five percent remaining, and Selacan's at just under, just over seventy-five percent remaining, but we've got some things coming that will require, just, um, legal, like the, um, bond review, that was something the board approved, um, to have to retain them for our bond council.
Doesn't look too gloomy yet, but it's too early, I, I don't wanna predict anything, I just think we have to be conservative as we move forward.
Yeah.
Dave, I don't know, what are your feelings on that?
Yeah, I think the same way. I think we're very conservative on that building.
I mean, there's a.
Everything else seems.
I'll give an example, John, John, the, uh, fire department chief brought some stuff up that probably need to be repaired, I mean, if I had the money, we'd probably plan it for this year, but it was brought in after budget season, and so I can, we can program it for, into the next year's budget, for sure.
And you know that, uh, almost a capital expenditure to an entire roof, so I think if we get proposals this year.
And if we have money, they'll go in, in cumber if we have an after money.
Well, we can schedule it for next year and plan on it, so.
And do, but, and, and by that time, we'll have, um, businesses looking for work for the following year.
That building's had a small leak in it since I've been a selectman for five years, we've tried to patch it, so another year is gonna end the.
Correct.
Whole cycle.
All right, uh, let's move, next item, any other further items, clean any other? Okay. Air quality test, uh, there's a, there's a lengthy thing on email sent to everyone, I want everyone to read it. My first blush, I don't think, I don't think we have any major problems in the building, I think everyone should read that, and we can comment next week on that.
I've read it in its entirety.
Likewise.
I haven't read the whole thing, but.
We'll defer it to next week on that one. I didn't see anything earth shattering that we need to have to do immediate action on at all.
Well, I skimmed it, and there was nothing, uh, in the media attention.
You know, and I, I do wanna comment that everything except for relative humidity was at or below the standards, and
Correct.
Most cases, it was very much lower than the standards that are given, so, um, relative humidity, he says, is affected by your heat system, it was the time of year in the wintertime, and, uh, as the windows get open in the spring, some of the relative humidity could, would come right back, so. I think that's, that was good to get the test back, so that.
Yeah, at least we have something on record, just like when we had concerns about our water, the thing to do was to have the water tested.
Yeah, so we have a basis now that if anybody says, you know, they're thinking this or that.
Yeah.
Go forward, we, we have a basis, that's right, we have a baseline. Okay, uh, next item was, uh, the transfer station, I'm gonna defer until he arrives, I told him to arrive around seven forty-five, so I'm gonna continue with, uh, mailbox items at this point. Any problems, gentlemen?
Nope.
Okay. Um, all right, we got some town court appointments, we do have to sign these tonight. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Dave, you're gonna be so kind, Dave?
Okay.
You, like we did the last time, read them all, who they're appointed to, and then we'll go ahead and sign them, and, and make a motion to accept them, and.
Okay. I'll make a motion to appoint Judy Keefe as alternate cemetery trustee, term ending March twenty twenty-three. Um, make a motion for Mark C Lang for Dunbarton Old Home Day Committee, term ending March twenty twenty-three. Elizabeth Bocher, Booser, for Dunbarton Town Hall Restoration Committee, term ending March twenty twenty-three. Kurt McDormitt for Town Hall, uh, Dunbarton Town Hall Restoration Committee, March twenty twenty-three. Cindy Lou Pinnard for Dunbarton Town Hall Restoration Committee, term ending March twenty twenty-three. And Margaret Watkins, Dunbarton Town Hall Restoration Committee, term ending March twenty twenty-three.
I second those appointments, as, as, as Red. All in, any discussion on them? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, please sign those. As those are being signed, I'm just gonna, uh, read an email from Woody, um, we can discuss it when he comes in, but the thing is, uh, Ed Wood, his last day is April ninth, Cameron Page is last Saturday, his last day is Saturday, April thirty, as of right now.
Mike, you just make a note for those that haven't been at our prior meetings, we did, uh, know this was coming up this spring, so we did apply again on Indeed for new help, it was, we have three applicants.
Yeah, and more coming in as we speak, so.
He interviewed, uh, one today and another one the other day, and we should have some update this afternoon.
Yeah.
On him, so that's.
May also qualify the people that are applying, maybe we're still, still having a sift.
Woody has some opinions on him, which are, uh.
They can stand up, we're taking them, no. Our feet. Mike, I dropped down the second line.
Gotcha, that's, that's fine.
I'll sign the third one.
Barely come out from the first guy, tough, that's a good idea.
Yep. Even if I sign first, I sign bottom.
You're a quick study, I understand. Okay, continuing with the mailboxes items. Just, uh, we have a ethics. This is, Justin, pay attention here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're gonna have a, uh, ethics meeting, um.
You already read the ethics meeting already, Justin?
Yeah.
But the thing is, you have to go some, for some training. There's gonna be an ethics meeting on Tuesday, April twelfth, at the Dunbar, uh, by the Dunbar, ethics committee. Uh, they'll be reviewing the Dunbar, Dunbar Ethics Code for all newly elected and appointed town officials. Lean, could you get this out to a town, all the town officials? In the meeting. The meeting will be at zero seven thirty at the town hall, and it will last no more than one hour on Tuesday, April twelfth. We have a couple emails regarding the hazard mitigation meeting coming up. Justin, I just wanna remind you, you have the honors.
Hazard mitigation?
Hazard mitigation. They'll be in your inbox for, yeah, you need to initial them, if you did not, you didn't initial, Dave, you need to initial.
I did, uh, call down this weekend, scheduled to be on that meeting. I did uh call down this weekend, scheduled to be on that meeting.
Yeah, so you, Dave was appointed as.
I stand corrected then, otherwise.
That's why I was like, hazard relegation.
I stand corrected. Thing is, one null versus the other, and I'll throw the same. I stand corrected, the things they are not all the same.
Yeah.
Okay, gotta have some humor here. So Dave, that's towards, that's for you then.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, uh, this one, I have a, there were some damages to some fencing, um, to some fencing down at the transfer station. And we had the uh company that did the install come back to us with a repair cost. And uh repaired, we get an estimated fix was four hundred and sixty dollars, and they're gonna repair the top rail damaged from a truck, and adjust the rolls as needed to, so they can open and close appropriately. Replace the one, one three inch uh black cap on one of the items. And um I have no problems with this. Any discussion on this?
No, I abstain.
Okay.
I know that uh when we put that fencing in, I wanted to make sure that we maintained it yearly, so it doesn't look all beat up and bent. And uh we did do adjustments on it last year, make sure the gates were rolling for free from that company, and also put some caps on that were missing, and tighten up the fence, so.
Okay.
I just like to make sure we keep it looking good. It's very little money if we do it yearly or every.
And it serves, serves a true safety purpose.
Yeah.
Okay, and for the record, for the town, um Justin uh recused himself because it was this company that made the original bid and did the repair, so.
Yep.
So appropriate, so, so Dave, between me and you?
Yep, I'll make a motion to accept that bid as written for four hundred and sixty dollars.
Yep, I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. You can, you can take her out.
I'll let him know.
Okay, let him know, yeah.
Another email we'll look at.
That's it, that.
That's it, that, I might answer that.
Um, I'm going to acknowledge, just for the, um, we have to do some signatures here, but John Wigan sent us the uh management operations plan, the emergency management operations plan. If you don't do one, we lose opportunity to get funding, uh there's a major flood in town, so we have to do it. Uh John is very uh, does it as needed to be, make sure it's renewed. And we just have to uh get a consensus to approve it, and I'll sign it. Any problems with it? If you wanna read it, if you want it at your leisure, it's right here.
Yep.
Okay. Um, if you want, it's the facility delivery of all types of emergency response, deal with the consequences of significant disasters. It outlines planning assumptions policies, concept of operations, organizational structures, and specific assignments or responsibilities to the town departments and agencies involved in coordinating local, state, and federal responsibilities. I could give one example, if we uh had a major power outage, like an ice out again, or if the roads were flooded out here before, remember how we had a major flooding at the, at the, at the uh state park? And those would be the type of things where we'd be actively moving out of.
Yeah, well, I mean, like you have the school that has those backup generators in other areas of town, so that way.
Right, and it talks about, you know, what serves as a public uh shelter, right?
So basically, the book that you have there, there are twelve of them within the town, they're all orange, bright orange like they are there. Uh what you're doing is updating the signature page of all the town officials, so then the event, we have to act on it, then they have a current um roster of people to reach out to, so.
Those are those other forms, that we're gonna be doing when we go to that meeting.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and sign this as a chairman.
And then there's another signature page on the, behind those, behind, no, not there, there.
Ah, yes, yes. Dave, you need a signature here?
Yeah.
And you got another one coming, too.
I think US Chair had that on page two.
Correct.
What are we doing, the thirty-first day of uh March?
Yeah, I think that's most appropriate.
There's one there for me to sign.
Yeah, you're on the end.
Yes, you're on the top.
Do you have one to send them back that way, so we don't lose them?
Do we get a copy up in this town office, Lean?
Yeah, that's our copy.
That's our copy, okay. The uh inside, inside the front.
Can you put the other copies inside?
Leave it inside the front.
Okay. Inside the front?
Yeah, right there, put them.
She's gonna get confused.
I, I think so, dude. I was just thinking that afterthought.
These are examples that we use from prior years and. Okay, thank you.
Mike, I noticed in your uh flyer, we do have summer scheduling, I think.
Yes, that's a next item I'm gonna do.
I forgot to put it on the agenda, but I'd like to speak on it.
Please, Lean.
I had a few minutes to spare, so I thought it would be a good time to just bring it up, uh since we're filling in some time. Every year, the board opts to go with a summer schedule. Um, I gave you both, or all of you, uh Schedule A and Schedule B, so they're just uh opposites of um weeks on and week off. If the board wants to take this home, then look at your personal schedules, see if anything works or works against, then um.
I'm, I'm very open to this. I don't have any agenda here, because I'm not, I usually don't go on a long trip, so uh thing is, I'm gonna let you gentlemen take, go home, look at your personal calendars, and next week, next week, they make a decision on it. Okay?
I'm more for option B, because, just because of, I have already scheduled.
Okay, now, speaking of just uh times we're not gonna be meeting, on April twenty-first, uh I like to just uh defer that, cancel that meeting outright. Uh I will not be in town, and the thing is, uh I'm gonna let, the town administrator's gonna be on a well-needed vacation to recuperate and recover after all this paperwork she's been through. And she's gonna have to get ready for a audit, which is, when she comes back, she'll be facing a major audit. And so I like the move that we uh defer, cancel the twenty-first meeting on the, April twenty-first.
I don't know why you couldn't even start the summer schedule in April.
Yeah, it's still spring. We have to go through a couple weeks in spring. But I think it's on April twenty-first.
It's somewhere somewhere.
In Florida.
Is that, okay.
We basically are, if we're canceling one of the meetings.
Uh, just for the record, uh thing is, if there's something of urgent, that has to be done, I can be reached by telephone, and uh the front, Lean's staff can call us in if there's an urgent item to act upon. And that would be safety, uh emergency, or anything like that, that needs to be made actions.
Probably with available iPhones.
Okay, so, so we begin Lean the twenty-first.
Do you want me to post that we're canceling the?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then I'll, I'll list the dates that you will be needing, depending on when you got, which schedule you guys.
Correct, but the twenty.
Now, you will, you like the schedule B, which is the green one, Justin?
Yeah.
I have no issue with that, if you want, just go ahead with it.
I, I have no prejudice with B either.
Did one work better with the holidays or anything?
They're actually both thirteen weeks, exactly.
Okay, so.
Because of.
Yeah, July, July fourth is on a Monday, and.
Okay, I just want to warn, these are not the exclusive meetings, sometimes during the summer, we also had ad hoc meetings for personnel plan updates and stuff like that.
And then one thing I just want to point out, this past year, we did have, missed a few Thursdays in November and December. So this year, uh we're only missing one November meeting, and then we have all the week, every five weeks in December that we'll be meeting for.
We can change it if we need to.
But we will have a few more meetings to meet.
Well, that's the, it's not a budget season, so we get our hearings in early.
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
Can I get a copy of that one, when you guys decide?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
In fact, before, yeah, it'd be nice, it'd be nice if you don't show.
I have an extra one.
Okay, and just, it's just uh green out the twenty-first.
Okay, so are we?
Yeah, let's go with the green one.
Green?
I think we can, we don't have to wait on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you know how I solved this problem?
Yeah, is that saying I'm not ripped from?
Ripped, 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 we're not gonna use that. You may get a copy tonight, Lean.
Yeah, thank you. Well, again, I, I, I won't be here for the, some of it, but my replacement will be in, you know.
Well, in that case, is it, who's it gonna be, Don?
Fred, probably Fred.
I'll have it on the.
Yeah, but I, I, I usually give them a copy anyways, you know.
All right, continuing on, um, just for the, for the, this is gentlemen, I just wanted to get an announcement tonight. We got the proposal, contract, first proposal from, for the uh library today, that was forwarded to me. Um, I, I gonna, I looked at it, I thought it was very good, everything was on budget, uh within, I need a couple questions answered by a town attorney. Before I enter into a contract, that's seven hundred thousand dollars, I'd like to have it reviewed by legal, if that's all right with you, Linus?
I'm wondering about.
Okay, so.
That's why it was a draft, I guess, so you guys can see down the end, change it.
And so I, we have, I wanna give them, give them a copy of the uh town meeting, what we actually voted on, look, have that as a background for them, so we'll probably link up with them probably Monday, Tuesday of next week. And I'm hoping that next week, we can, if he gets back to us in a time of matter, we can actually, or talk about it next week and send it out for final.
The green is the date.
Yeah, exactly, in fact, I, I shared that with Lean tonight. Lean says, why is it so much? I said, it's not so much, it's, the, the funding is coming from two sources. Some of the items, if you recall, we took out of our maintenance line, some of them were, and the majority of it, were taken out of um, uh being funded by the uh Warren.
Yeah, and Mike, if you want, they did them as alternate, because that's how Dennis Myers, our architect, did.
Right.
If you want them on, those two items on a separate contract, you can also call.
Yeah, I, I don't want to make needless paperwork, I think we can just keep the funding, so, I mean, it's, at the end of the day, it's all gonna be funded with one check from them.
Right. Well, similar.
Lean, pick that on, Lean, pick that up quickly.
But I, you know, he's got a valid point, though, if the voters and the audit for the Warren article says it's six hundred ninety-seven, we probably should have it on a separate contract.
Okay.
Yeah, but then we did the other line, we funded him, so.
Right, and it's not part of that operating budget, because I have to keep track of that for the audit, and.
Kelly's number was on there, you could call her and she'd just change it.
Okay.
She can put the addendums on a separate.
Okay.
Why don't we do that before we send it over to legal?
Correct, and so we didn't have, well, you got it late, we didn't have time to um even make any forward progress with it. But one of the items that we'll, we'll need is the um discussion of the town meeting, and Linda Landry, those, those are supposed to be due this week sometime, she said she should have them by Monday. So if I can streamline the questions, and then have the pieces that he needs to look at to make an assessment, and then report back, then it'll be.
I'm, I'm open to, I, I'm not gonna force Lean to do it Monday, but I'm, Tuesday, I would like to force her to do it.
Yeah.
And uh so Tuesday would be a good day to have that, can, come together so we can present it to him. The problem is, if you don't ask the questions, he'll, he'll go through it hours upon hours, and bill us hours upon hours.
Re- reinvent the wheel, and I don't want to spend all that extra time.
Because it is a boilerplate contract, but there's just a couple questions I had on it.
Yeah.
Dave, I'll be honest with you, the one thing that, I, that put the fear of God in me when I read that, was the fact that if this price increases, increases along the way, we're responsible for it.
Yeah.
And.
There, um, almost every contractor that I have, just being in the business, has changed their contracts to read that, only because prices are going up daily, not weekly or monthly, but daily. But one thing they did do is they um held their original price of all their vendors, and did, put the due diligence in to call them in advance to make sure that they were gonna do it.
And the risk, I think, because, based upon that, I can't wait four weeks and expect the price to hold.
Yeah, we need to act fast, get something.
But, but even if, even if we don't act fast, though, we're gonna be subject to the price increases if they don't buy the stuff early.
And, and you can talk to them, but that is their plan.
Yeah.
That's why they made those initial calls and took a week to develop their contract.
Which I, which I have no problem with, I mean, you don't want, nobody in business wants to go into a, uh, any type of operation and lose money.
So, so we're on this discussion, the only area that you can spend your money from is the approved operating budget that the voters passed.
Yep.
So with that, if you're looking at what's remaining in the building maintenance, we may want to hold off on the roof repairs or any big projects because then we may have to tap into the remaining funds that are there.
For, for, for price increases, yes.
For price increases, right, um.
That's the risk we have.
Because then the other option would have to be to put a moratorium on spending, and ask all your departments to stop spending for anything other than.
Or, or it could have, Woody, recycle more metal.
Yeah.
Woody, we saw those reports today, by the way, we salute you.
You have two thousand shy of your budget.
I gotta, uh, make it, because I gotta check for sixteen hundred and sixty.
Yeah, but it's only March. I think you're gonna make it. You're gonna like, put the remainder of the year, but.
Okay, okay, but that's the challenge we have, and, and so the thing is, I, I agree with Lean, Lean's uh, we gotta watch our spending when it comes to maintenance line, because we may need that to pay the bills.
Yep, we've been doing that. That's what we've just been doing, this small money.
Yeah, okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, I know they didn't start yet, but what is their, um, what's their anticipated finish?
Twenty weeks.
Twenty weeks.
Twenty weeks, okay.
And I, I'm looking at a start probably in April sometime, probably the latter part of April. And uh go from there. And the thing is, a lot, it is for the public, we, we, we're at the library that they may have to close, or go to like COVID operations during the construction phase, we're gonna call them construction operations, where they can have book pickup and stuff like that, and outdoor activities, but not necessary indoor activities.
But fortunately, they'll be done early enough, so the board will know if they can't spend any money to repair the roof.
They did their, um, they did their due diligence over the last week and a half, two weeks, um with all of their vendors and subcontractors. They put it back out to them, because they bid this back before their town meeting. And so they put it back out to their vendors to see if there were any cost increases that they could not um manage or keep up with, and all of their vendors came back and said they would hold their prices except for two, and those, actually three, and those three came back with alternative ideas, like the um EDPM roofing, instead of white. Will be black, which is just the same as we have on the front of the roof, same thickness, and that saved six thousand dollars, so they were able to keep in their budget. And uh only because I know I'm the elevator company, went up by six thousand dollars, but because we're in a, a budding neighborhood in town, they're gonna hold the price for the town of Dunbar.
Thanks.
So, they did a lot of due diligence to get this to Mike, and they sent it as a draft.
But the, the issue is, we wait, the longer we wait, where, where are prices going?
So in other words, once they sign the contract, the contractor's prepared to buy the stuff.
Right, yeah, right, but as I said, at least they'll be completed early enough, early on, so that way the board will know if you had to take some of that money out of your building maintenance.
Correct, correct.
So that's a good.
So assuming the contract is reviewed, comments come back, we agree next Thursday, assuming the board accepts the contract, then we'll schedule a.
Pre-construction meeting with.
Pre-construction meeting.
Yeah.
And then with that, there'll be some kind of payment schedule for.
There's, was there a payment schedule in that contract?
I didn't have a chance to get it.
I, I did, then, okay.
It's pretty low, but I'll, I'll look at it again.
Okay.
There should be one in there, I'm not sure, it's normally part of that AIA contract.
Okay.
And the latter part of it.
Yeah, okay, I'll take a look.
Thing is, we, we just don't, we don't follow the roof tracker uh policy, you know.
Yeah, but the selectmen have always been, we've been burnt a few times, so we try to make sure that we either, A, have a um purchase order, that the material's been ordered, and we're going to be getting that delivered. Or we have the carpet delivered on, on site before we hand fifty percent out, just so that we don't get burned.
I know that the contractor is preparing to take inventory at his office, so that the price are home, whether it's toilets or all that stuff, he's gonna do the pre-purchasing with his vendors to make that happen.
Yeah.
Good.
Excellent. Okay, um, that's my mailbox, I'm gonna, um, let's uh go back to uh the agenda. Um, Woody, if you come up, this is the public, we're in a public session still.
Okay, one, one last thing on that, or one? Rely on any expertise that Dennis Myers can help you with, because we did pay him for those services to review the contract and all that.
Okay.
So. And just for the, for the record, um, Dave, as a member of the uh Dunbar, um, the committee.
Restoration.
Restoration committee, he's gonna appear before the planning board to give him an overview of what the project entails, as a courtesy.
And I, I would keep it up to date as a selectman's rep anyway, but hold it much so.
Yeah, and Lean, I would ask you, could you have electronic copies of the uh, of the uh plans?
Yeah.
Could you email to the planning board?
I'll send it to Don, and I'll ask him to set forward that.
Please. It, it's just a, it is a plan that has some impact, impact on the town, it's, I think it's courteous that the uh planning board has visibility of it. The six, they have a workshop. That's, so Lean, that's coming up real soon.
Yeah, I'll get them out tomorrow.
Yeah. Okay. So we start off with good news, you recycle those.
I have another check for you, I'll come in this weekend, like sixteen hundred and something bucks.
All right, that's great, okay, but it's, we have your email, so, from last week.
Yes.
And you got a copy, we can start going through it, or you wanna talk as a group, or?
Yeah, uh, pretty much, and we just, I wanted to give you guys a heads up on some stuff, rather than trying to wait at the last minute, you know what I'm saying?
We got your email on any, the last day.
Yeah, 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 that stuff there, but the other stuff here was just stuff while I was thinking of it, I wanted to throw out, so that you guys, you know, aren't one-sided at the last minute, kinda thing.
Okay.
Um, so, let's see, find where I am here. I remember one is done, right?
Do you want, what I did for the board, because you wrote so much, is I, every subject I separated it.
Oh, yeah, I might be handy.
Okay.
I just got a note, Joe.
You were ranting.
All points. Long, running through my brain, I'm just running it down.
That's okay, that's okay, that's good.
So one of the things I, I wanted to talk to you guys about, and it's been a problem, it's been a problem on and off, is cell phones in the workplace. And I know we don't have a policy, so it's really tough for me to do anything about it.
You gotta talk to them, they're all, they'll leave anyway. You gotta talk to them, they're all gonna leave anyway.
Well, well, I mean, but if there's something in play, you know, may I have it where we're on our cellphone? And we're working, and we're out with the residents, and we're yapping on our cellphone, to me, that's not professional. Uh you need to be, you need to be on your phone on your time. You get a break, you get it once.
Lean, is there anything in our policy that refers to cell phone?
That was number three.
Okay. I didn't think there was.
Lunch breaks, breaks.
I would rather do it as a policy discussion than his own department, because.
Yeah, it should be.
No, I was just bringing it to you, this is an issue that I figured that.
It's a good idea in this day and age that we have something in our policy in reference to what.
I know for me, as I've been in business, I have problems with that all the time, too, and you know, I'm. I tell them, I said, if it's an important call.
Yep.
You know, if your wife knows, call twice, and if it rings twice consequently consistently, then pick up the phone. But if it's just your friend Snapchatting you or texting you, then don't touch your phone.
Right, yeah, the other side of the coin is we have a landline there, so if there's an emergency, they could call you on the the landline phone. You know, we answer that. I know, it's just maybe it's nitpicking, but it's very irritating to me. When we're working and somebody stops and got a yap on the phone. Wait a minute, we're working here.
Right.
You know, that's just a pet fever.
So you'd like to have a policy.
So Lean, when we do our policy update, you know, when we do one of those special meetings, let's uh, let's add that to our agenda if we could, and.
Yeah.
I'd rather have it developed from us, because that way, we're not just going out there and saying something willy-nilly.
Right, no, and like I said, it's been, and you should, that's been there for a while, it's just kinda irritating, so I thought, hey, you want, bring it to the board.
But as you go forward with new employees, I say, listen, I'm not there thirty minutes talking to your phone. You can take a thirty second phone call if there's an emergency, so be it, let me know what's going on.
Right.
Or have him call the office if there's an emergency.
And the tough thing is, we don't have nothing, anything to back it. We don't, it's not your plan.
They're gonna say, oh, you developed this, Woody.
Right, so I don't, you know, just, you know, maybe you do nothing, and that's fine, but I'm just bringing it to your attention that, you know, that is a problem.
Yeah, like I tell, I tell my guys that if they're, you know, say they're white or girlfriend's pregnant, I say, tell your foreman if it's close to your due date. And, you know, call your foreman or do some sort of, you know, so you know why their phone's ringing, you know?
And the other problem that it's tough with it, and I totally get it, is I'm on my cellphone, you say, well, that's not fair. It's a town cellphone. I have vendors that call me on my town cellphone. They also, even though they have the town number, they also contact me on my personal line.
And you get firewarden duties.
Yeah, but that stuff is pretty much, you know, that doesn't, uh but it's, you know, like I said, I do get on my phone, and it's because. Vendors contact me, they want pictures, they want this, they want that. Majority of the time, I try to get them to do it either via email or over the landline. The cellphone service can be sketchy, but you know, so there is another side to that coin. I don't want you to think it's all one-sided. I am online, but it's typically for town business. So there is two sides to that coin.
Okay.
Um town equipment, I have some stuff that we're not using. Uh one being a tank. Uh it's a double lined used oil tank, or waste oil tank, that we purchased years ago through a grant. Uh we changed the way we do it now, with our used oil, for a simple fact is prior vendors now wanna charge us for it. Go see, go figure, you know, oil prices as high as they are, they want charges to pick it up. So we have an agreement with a neighbor in town. DES rules say that it has to be in containment. We use fifty-five gallon drums now. We have a platform. Um that goes for our vegetable oil, it goes for our draining, uh we drain filters and drain containers. That has to be in containment, so we have one containment unit now that these two barrels, that four barrels sit on top of it. So if there is a spill that contained, we we are compliant with DES rules.
Is there a market for that oil tank?
I have no idea, but I would like to try it. I'm assuming, you know, there's plenty of people that are using. Um used oil, waste oil, it's a double line tank.
Okay.
When we got that type like ten years ago, or more, actually more than that, it was fairly expensive.
There should be an auction coming up in the spring.
Yes, the state auction coming up.
We did do it that last year, too, so.
There's uh some other avenues we can try as well, um you know, and if it doesn't work, then it goes. It's whatever you guys wanna do. You know, we can, there's other, there's um other government agencies that you can list on. Um plus there's, you know, other ones as far as like.
Well, pursue one or two, that you think might work, and we'll go from there.
Right, and then there's some other stuff that we have, too, like the, it's in the way, we're not using it. Um I replaced, as you know, last year I bought a new plow for the skid steer, I know there's some questions, oh, eventually that machine's coming, I'm gonna replace it. The attachments, as you know, you, I'm assuming you have some.
Yeah.
They don't change. It's on the skid steer attached, it's skid steer attached. We have one, a plow that's, that I've replaced. That we no longer need, that we like to.
You still have one for the skid steer stuff?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it's an a- a surplus.
It's an extra piece of equipment that we like to send down the road. Um I have, we have a user, a snowblower that. I I have at my house, I'm not gonna lie, it's at my house, it's in pieces, got it working over and off, trying to repair it over the winter, and the motor's junk in it. Um it's not worth.
Metal, Ben.
It's not worth fixing, I don't know, it's up to you guys what you wanna do with it, if you wanna throw in scrap metal, if you want me. The main frame of it's good, but the motor's junk. You can send it in the state auction, whatever you wanna do.
I don't think there's any value to that.
No, I don't. It's totally up to you guys.
In fact, I think you have to pay people to take it sometimes.
Um and then we have um a couple lawnmowers, pushmowers that are nothing, uh which we replaced. Um with a more safer unit, you know, you know, we ordered at the end of the year. So I'd like to get rid of those as well, this stuff that's hanging around it. It's in the way, we don't need it anymore. Um I think that was it, just those.
Okay.
Four things.
We have consensus to let him act, go for it.
Find the best avenue, like, if you see fit to.
Okay.
Get rid of them.
Where are we gonna advertise these to? I think the best bet is to go to the state auction, you don't have to deal with it, you don't have to respond to the call.
Too, you wanna try that.
Try some other ones, too.
Yeah, we can try some other, we can, it doesn't matter, I mean, I don't mind, you can have a, you know, while we're there. You know, open hours to the public, wherever they can show us that, it doesn't matter. You know, whatever you guys would like to do.
End of vehicle?
Usually first of May, Mayish.
That's all, even if you want, if you wanna explore another avenue first, and if it doesn't go, then let's be prepared to get it to the state auction, right?
We can do that.
Yeah, okay.
Just so it's not hanging around all summer.
Right, you got the numbered one?
What?
You have the numbered one now?
Yeah, he does.
Yes.
So that was number four, what he was talking about.
Yeah, whichever one you wanna go to next, just tell them which.
Yep.
Yeah, we did four, okay.
Number two is just the guys don't seem to wanna work Saturdays.
Yeah, well, I told you guys that before, I just wanted to give you that heads up.
Yep.
Um.
If you can, uh remind Eddie that if he plans on coming back in the fall, working a few Saturdays, if you need some time off, would would hurt, you know, when he.
Right.
It would cement his position.
Okay.
Now, it's it's goodwill, too, both ways.
That's what I'm thinking.
Uh number five, let's see, I'm gonna read what I wrote, because I spent a week now. Oh. A project, so if if there's money, that's why it says, if, if I have some money at the end of my year. Obviously, I'm gonna come to the board, but I'm giving you heads up now. Um I would like to do something with a set of scales. I'm not talking big truck scales, because they're forty, eighty thousand, hundred thousand. I'm blocking a little set of scales, so we're able. Um to weigh our demo and make the process easier than we're doing it now.
Like a, like a farm scale, like a.
Yeah, it's uh, we have one now, they're a five by five scale, they will take five thousand pounds, um as opposed to.
Woody, take the demo and set all on that.
The people emptied into that, and then we dumped it with a skid steer into the dumpster. You gotta come up with a way that's a, a little more fair for both parties. One for the user and one for the town, for a simple fact is. Some numbers I'm seeing in the very near future, because our contract is up this year, and I've been approached by. One facility, um and the numbers are gonna climb, and it is gonna be scary. I'm just throwing that right up front.
I'm just thinking, the manpower is so limited down there now, to add the scale and the use of that, it's gonna be a lot more complicated for these guys.
I would say, let's leave it on the table, but discuss it in the fall.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I don't even know if I'm I'll have anything left at the end of the year. I just wanted to throw this out now, so it's on the table, and yeah. If it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen.
Mind just to first, keeping on the, on keeping alive, but not.
Should remember one thing, they can't multiply to get the pure foot of the vehicle.
Right, this would actually make it a lot easier, because you put it in the scale, the weight, and it's X amount. You basically could take all your material in one number, so say, for instance, uh it's nine cents a pound. And you have five thousand pounds, ding ding ding, there you go, there's your answer. As opposed to, we gotta measure this, we gotta measure this, okay, now we're gonna divide by this, okay, we're gonna go to the list, what is it? Okay, now we gotta multiply it, just to try and make it a little easier. That's that's all my intent was, is to make.
I'd say we just leave it on, leave it on the table and don't dismiss it.
Yeah, I just feel like that's gonna be a more nuisance for residents if you come in with a pickup truck worth of stuff. I mean, I, I see both sides of it.
Yep.
But we're definitely.
Okay.
It just.
Just wanna throw it out. Before we make a definite.
Yeah, no decision, yeah, I agree.
As we look at these fees, I wanna make sure we remember that these guys are taxpayers.
Yep.
And we don't get a heck of a lot for our tax base that we're paying, so I don't wanna overdo it.
Well, absolutely not, but we also have to take into consideration costs are going up. And the town, some, one of the things where I'm coming from, I'm seeing the overabundance of some stuff. And what happens is if you're not competitive fee-wise with other towns. All of a sudden, I've got thirty new friends, because they know that Dunbar's cheap. And I'm not saying, I do it, but you know what I'm saying, all of a sudden, you got thirty new friends here, can you take that in there? And then we become competition with a company, for instance, tires. Say Mr. Jesus, and I don't know what their price is, say they're four dollars a tire, and Dunbar's charging two dollar tire. Where all the tires gonna end up? That people wanna bring back. They come back, they come back.
Right?
They have to be a residence, but like I said, I've seen it before, you get a lot more friends, you can get rid of them there. It's. It's one of those things, you gotta kind, you don't wanna overcharge, but you have to stay competitive, so you don't become the dumping ground.
Yeah.
Which, and all of a sudden, now you're more and more and more labor trying to deal with.
Too high, then it becomes Jeff's problem.
Right, you you wanna stay competitive, but you don't wanna be the low guy that's gonna start getting stuff from other towns. It does happen.
Yeah.
Um that's, that's all I was going with with that.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Did you say you have a scale there now that you use?
Right, we, it's one we use in the building.
Oh, in the building, so it's not something that the public can put stuff on?
No, it's in, in, and we weigh our bales and that sort of stuff.
Okay, good, yeah, I.
Inside the building.
Yeah.
Number six, your building?
At some point, like I said, it's probably not gonna happen for a little bit, but if we don't have the discussion. At some point, we are gonna have to do something with the building. Um I have containers, uh but where I'm going with for a building is something to put our equipment under. Uh we spend a lot of time, a lot of labor, cleaning snow off from trucks and pieces of equipment. We just had something we can put them under, they keep them out of the weather.
I recall you had a proposal, at least we're thinking about using like boxes.
Yes, I have the boxes, but lumber took off, lumber like a year or so ago, lumber that's really started to shoot out and kinda put it on hold.
Hopefully, it it it's a cycle.
Right, and but I figured if I don't bring it to your attention, we can't have a discussion at some point about it.
We'll leave it on the table, leave it on the.
It is a cycle all uphill.
Yeah, but you know, at some point, I would like to have the discussion, and you know, this town is gonna keep growing. And at some point, we're gonna expand our walls, and we're gonna have to do something, so if we think about it now, we'll be ahead of the curve.
That sounds like it would be something on the capital improvement.
Yeah.
If the planning board's gonna be reviewing that again, a a big structure like that would fall into the Dills guidelines.
Yep.
Because we're growing.
And even, even just to regulate a paint to or something, doesn't have to be completely covered, or like, I'm not a complete building. Could just be a roof over it, right?
Yeah, it has to be, it'd have to be pretty high. I mean, the truck is.
Transfer sta-, I mean, I, I like the.
Yeah, it'd be.
Carriages.
What's that?
Like they have a, like a lean-to over.
Something, something to be able to put things under and keep it out of the weather.
That's how they keep the salt from.
You know, we have, we have a lot of valuable equipment, and I like to keep it as long as we can, you know, that kinda stuff.
Okay, employees, we know about that.
Yeah, and like I said, at some point, I think we're getting close to the time, you see what we're, we're not getting for people. Um I'm, I'm thinking at some point, possibly next year, we need to have a discussion about putting a full timer on. No, nobody wants to hear that, but I think we're getting to that point.
Woody, it's on my agenda, too.
So I I think we're.
Right.
Reaching it, um and that's all.
Okay. The uh skid steer replacement, I see the next item?
Yeah, some point, I don't know, maybe we gotta readjust the capital improvements. It was due this year, but it's still going good. But I think we need to, you know, so we don't have ten pieces of equipment coming in one year.
Hours you got on that?
Uh, close to five thousand now. And they, those machines, depends on who you talk to, five, six thousand hours. You start having a lot of trouble with them, knock on wood, we've been doing good with ours. Um but I don't wanna be waiting at the last minute going, hey, guess what, we need to do a machine this year. And they're fifty thousand dollars or sixty thousand dollars, I don't wanna wait till the last minute.
Well, if you keep adding it to your uh budget for your equipment there at the town meetings every year, hopefully we have some money to go towards it.
Right, but it's, I I just wanna get this out, so it's, you're not blindside about it, we have some ideas. Budget, you know, budgeting things, that sort of stuff.
How many years old is it now?
We bought it in two thousand seven.
Two thousand seven, so fifteen.
Fifteen.
Divided by, you got five thousand hours, let's say.
Roughly.
Okay.
Uh, let's see.
Fee schedule, you talked about that. Your current fee schedule, I think, was twenty nineteen? Yeah, twenty nineteen.
It would be the whole town.
Yeah, when we did last, it was nineteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I.
It's been a while, I know that.
It's time to do it.
Yeah.
Well, at least look at it. Yeah, I I'd recommend if you make some changes, so we can compare and contrast what we have, and just make it, put it on agenda.
Well, typically, what we try to do is we have to have the public here.
Right, but we gotta reveal them first.
Correct, um but to have that information and then get everyone on board, you have the town clerk that charges fees.
Oh, you went to it.
Department that charges fees, the planning, the police department approached you last week, saying he'd like to revisit his special duty fees, so. The best time to do it is all together, so you're gonna memo out saying, you know, please submit your recommended changes for the board to consider. So we can hold a public hearing and then get input from the the public. It's usually summertime, late summer that we'll do something like that.
Yeah, yeah. Midsummer, we could do a little workshop on that one, once we get all that.
So I guess revise them and then hand them to us, and then we'll have it, uh, because the police department did, and I don't think we're gonna wait that long for the police department. Because they'd like to adjust their fees, so.
Um, yeah, and then building department charges a lot of fees, and we have coffee fees and.
So maybe, why don't you send a note out to the department heads?
Yeah.
If there are any fees they wanna have, uh maybe get them to this by the end of May, so we can make a decision on them.
Yeah, I think let's target June for a decision one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so they gotta do it, so hand them in there.
Right.
A few, a couple weeks to review, so.
You get, you get early notice.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um so, uniforms. I know things are looking a little different now, but at the point, it was only gonna be a couple of us there. I wanted to make sure you still want to move forward with the contract, uh because once you're locked into it, you're locked into it, and sometimes it can be a dickens to get out of it. Um I know Pete still, you know, he gets his uniforms, I still get uniforms, and Brett gets them. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, he didn't wanna try and just extend this one for a little bit to see how things were gonna go. Or if you just wanna jump in.
Well, which you're, 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 you're the frontline person, which which you're about.
Can I just speak on that just a little bit? Because we've worked together on that uniform contract. I believe that the contract says that uh. It will automatically renew without notice after the first year is gone. And then the individual involved with the, with the contract can in, with writing, give a thirty days notice to to.
Yeah, I've already been in touch with them, and they're kinda just waiting to see what we're gonna do.
And thumbs up, comes down, or?
I I think we need to, if we're gonna move forward and you wanna do another three or five year contract, I would suggest probably a three.
Well, the thing is, I I, the question is, are you satisfied with them?[1714.44]
No.
Then I'd say.
But I'm not the only, you know, I have.
Right.
The other guys are happy with them, I'm not with my stuff.
Okay.
But I think we need to put it out and get more pricing.
Okay, I I.
For three other vendors.
That's how I would end the thing, if you wanna, if there's improvement to be made.
But I just want to make sure you guys are.
Doing for you?
We can't get a lot of stuff.
Like what, your pants on and jackets?
Shirts.
And have you had the conversation with the vendor?
The conversation with the manager, the driver, the acting manager, the branch manager.
What are their excuses?
They, we, in our policy, it says that you, Eric, if you're in traffic, you're supposed to have high vis. Technically, we're in traffic, so high vis, well, when you have it with the reflective stripe, this is the issue we're coming in with them. They gave us all shirts, they did what they were supposed to. Three, four, five, six washes later, it's like tape, I don't know if you ever seen it, it's like tape, well, it shrinks after the way they dry it.
It crinkles out.
Then they're having to change shirts back though, or we're getting shirts that make us look like we bought them at the baby gap, um, that sort of stuff. They they just weren't standing up, they weren't coming back clean, they've tried their wash process. Um, so I said, listen, this isn't doing either one of us any good, so let's get rid of the shirts. And we've been buying these, I know if you see it in the fall, I order them offline, we get these shirts. Unfortunately, and the guys, they won't clean them, we have to clean them ourselves. Basically, what my guys get, because we have the high vis, we basically get pants from them, we try jackets from them. Um, they gave us like what they call a bomber jacket, has a waistband here, nice jacket, if you stand still. You start bending and going over, the thing comes up, we tried different jackets with them, they just really couldn't get us a decent jacket. They tell me now they might have something, but I.
To me, it's enough to look for a new vendor.
Yeah.
Are there a lot of vendors out there that sell?
Pretty much three.
I don't know, but.
There's only a few.
Before you do a a lot of work checking all the other vendors, you should see what they have to offer, they, those vendors might all offer the same thing.
Right, and that's so, some of them, I I've been doing this, I've gotten some books from them and looking through them, they've been out and talked to us.
Can I think out of the box for a minute?
Sure.
Look, look at how much money we pay for that.
Yeah.
Would it be worthwhile to buy uniforms for the employees and give it to our employees? No.
They'd have to get a washer and dryer to clean them, because you can't take clothes clothes.
Somebody else doing all that cleaning service.
Okay, just think.
Hey, John, what company do you guys use for?
UniFirst.
UniFirst?
UniFirst.
Yeah, it's one of the ones that, uh, he wants to talk to us, we had, we had UniFirst years ago, a lot of these companies. And we know what's going on in the world, they're buying each other out, you know, at one point, there was probably ten companies, well, now these guys are buying each other out.
I I would say, put it in action on them, start looking for something.
Yeah, cause I don't, we don't have any issue with what you guys give.
So, I just wanted to make sure that you guys.
Happy, right?
That you guys wanted to enter into a long term agreement again, not.
Well, the thing is, I think we have a one that every thing we can cancel within thirty days of any time.
I think most of those.
Well, they're not small guys at the highway department too, if they're bending over, I'm sure they're getting the same.
He has a different style jacket than we do.
Yeah.
Um, those jackets, I asked Pete, they're not super warm, I mean, we wear stuff underneath our jackets already, but. How much stuff can you wear underneath a jacket when it's ten below zero and you're outside there, you know?
Right.
You need something that's a little bit warmer.
Okay, go, that's your homework.
Yes, um, so the last thing was, um, I I called Greg, the handyman. And he's, it's been on the safety agenda, he's gonna come out and take a quick look at our fan, see what the issue is up there. Uh, because the bathroom fan vents into the building now, he's gonna take a look at that. I asked him, hey, while you come out, can you take a look at our roof and see what's going on, cause it is still leaking. I know the town spent the money, put them nice panels up there, they work really well.
The clear ones.
The clear ones?
Yeah.
But we still got a leak someplace, lots of leaks, it's.
I can tell you probably what's happening, cause the metal expands and contracts in a different rate than the wood.
Yeah.
The screws end up working up after ten, fifteen years.
Yeah.
And when those are up, when the rain's coming down, now you start getting dripping in, it's happening all over a barns. And that's the same type of roof as a barn, it probably needs to be re-screwed down and re-gasped.
To the gentleman Keegan who did that roof, and there are nails, those are nails, those are ring nails of washers. And I talked to him about it, I said, hey, sometime, can you just give me a quote, what it take, can you do redo this whole thing?
To re, to catch them, yeah.
You know, we've had issues with it, it's been repaired three times that I that I had repaired, and then you guys put the new panels on. Um, still issues, you know, we have a bucket out back that collects.
You were talking about having them take the screws out, puts, I mean.
Put a whole new roof on that place.
A whole new roof?
Whole metal roof. No, no, and I, that's why. Give me a number, and if it happens, it happens, if it doesn't, it doesn't, but at least bring it to your attention.
Is it worthwhile to do any immediate repairs right now with with some immediate repairs or replacing some bolts up there, or screws?
I don't know where the water's coming from.
Okay.
Alls I know is when it rains, it comes right through the main roof into the, cause it's a building within a building, comes through the office.
If you can, if you can find a roofer to come inspect it, it'd be great, the key word, if you can find someone at this day and age.
Right, that's why I asked Greg, I said, hey, while you're up there, can you see?
He's Greg, a roofer guy.
I don't know.
He's a handyman.
You might, you might know something, but maybe he could see where the leak is.
You let him look, but that'd be the first question, then if not, call, get some people out there, see if a repair job can be done, or what they'd recommend.
Like I said, it comes through.
Public wants to say something, go ahead.
Well, I just wanna ask, um, Dave's right, the the woods, uh, expands differently than the metal. I've had the same problems, with the nails with the washers, can you, can they be replaced with screws?
I don't think they're gonna pull out very well.
Yeah, well, I don't know.
Um, I think you're gonna find the heads, cause they're a little more gonna break it off.
I would say, what can you put rubberized compound on top, on the, on top of the washers, just to seal the, the hole.
Oh, that, what's that, flex seal?
There you go, flex seal.
Seals everything, right?
Okay, no, but you need to get a professional little cat.
Right, like I said, cause it comes through one roof, it's into the second roof, it's into the insulation.
Keep that on the table, and just, we'll have them on to that.
Good.
Okay.
That's it on those.
Oh, you haven't heard the good stuff yet. Gentlemen, if you take out the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, can you talk without giving names, how did the contract, how did the interviews go?
Out of seven.
Okay.
Right, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I had four no shows. One show and leave.
I re, I heard that, he got scared by looking at the place.
Evidently, um, it debuted one yesterday, promising, one today. Not so promising.
Okay.
Potential another one Saturday.
Okay.
The one that was promising, what are we waiting for?
We're gonna come to you guys.
You, you, you got a?
Yes, yes.
Put that for the non-public time?
Yes, I have the stuff here with me.
Okay, great.
Okay.
And the not so promising was due to, you looked at me over the phone, there's a potential medical issue?
Yes.
And I don't wanna talk about it now.
No, but the the person, I will say, was very upfront with it, um, so the cards are on the table, there was no hiding anything, so.
How bad does he want it, does he seem desperate for the job, cause I'm looking, I'm looking at just, I'm thinking out of the box here. The gentleman may have a medical issue, that may prevent him from doing some heavy labor there, but the thing is, when you're standing by the dipsy dumpster, it's not heavy labor there. People dump their own trash in, you push the button, you make sure they they're doing everything right, I mean, but the thing is, is it fair to pay someone to do that? And then you have the other person come in and have them do all the heavy labor, that's where the.
There's some other sides to that coin.
I think we need to wait to come.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, but the thing is that we can get more detailed information, okay, se- se- second, separate subject. Um, I looked at the halls, this is, um, I don't want you to get burned out, okay?
Yeah.
I, the thing is, that's how I wanna start this discussion. Um, what I like, what I'm proposing is that, uh, we make an average of, um. Uh, we make one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. About, we made about sixteen runs between, um, January first and March, the first week of March, about sixteen runs to Bowel Recycling. That's about two runs per week.
Yeah, pretty much, yes, it pretty much averages that.
And the thing is, um, in that, what I wanna do is bring in waste management to do some of our hauling. For just, not all of hauling, just for some of the trash runs. And I like to bring them in for a six month trial basis, and whether we keep them, I don't know, I think is, uh, but I looked at the cost here, the cost is not that much more. It's, um, um, a couple thousand dollars more, when I say a couple, we're talking about, um.
Mike, can you go over your column just so we understand?
Sure, thing is, if you're looking, um, on the right hand side, you have the waste management, left hand side is Bowel Recycling, okay?
And Bowe Recycling is another company that hauls also.
No, Bowe Recycling is where we take our trash too.
They also, so, I can interject right here, right off the bat, they'll probably go put the cabash, the one I'm seeing right here.
Okay.
So you have Bowe Recycling at seventy-nine ninety, be reminded, you are in a contract, you cannot venture off that contract. You cannot have another company. This looks like to me, that's their eighty dollars is their tonnage fee for disposal, as is Bowe's. You cannot do that, cause you're under a contract, you're under a contract for Town of Bow until December thirty-first.
Well, the thing is, if I have to bring, do I have to bring all my trash there, or some of my trash?
You're under a contract, and it's under a tonnage contract, I know towns that have tried this.
Okay.
Um, they tried it with the co-op, which we used to be a member of, and you actually, it costs them money.
Okay, what?
You can't do that, cause you, when we signed the contract with them. There's X amount of tonnage.
Let's go back somewhere.
Yep.
When you go on vacation, who hauls the trash?
Uh, Zero Waste.
Okay, which is not part of Bowe's.
They, they, right, they're the same company, but one is the truck inside, and one is the waste side.
Can Zero Waste come in and haul for us if we have to?
They do when I'm out, it has to be.
What I, what I'm proposing is, what I would like to see is have some company come in here to preserve your time at the transfer station. So you can be there with new employees or no employees, someone's gotta be there, especially during those hours when we're open. And I don't care if I gotta pay someone to come in and haul our regular trash to Bowe Recycling. And the thing is, we can do this for the interim, we can do it per load, but at this point, I'm I'm pulling you in ten different directions where. You can't even train anybody, cause you're not gonna be there on site, because you're making a run, so what I wanna do is supplement some of the runs, not all the runs. But the thing is, uh, I general trash, which is about twice a week, does that mean we can continue our recycling and all the other stuff that you normally make? Absolutely yes, cause we can't let that truck sit idle, otherwise it just rots. And and so, what I wanna do, and this was one avenue I was looking at, but if we can get even. The other company which you used while you're on vacation, come in and supplement us, even one, one time a week. That would be more time for you to be on station on site, and I'm not trying to, that's my goal. I don't, I don't wanna burn you out, and the thing is, uh, is we're running out of people here.
So, I'm gonna play devil's advocate, cause that's what I do, uh, my devil's advocate on this is, I will tell you right up front. And I've told you guys this before, trucking's not the problem, problem is money, everybody knows it boils down to money. I ran some quick numbers tonight, just tonnage numbers, go on the low side, go on the high side of hauls. Figuring that out, as you know, we're gonna be losing two employees, majority of it boils down to money. We lost two good employees probably before, uh, back a little bit, and it all boils down to money. The extra money that this, that we're gonna spend to have somebody haul for a short period, I know nobody wants to hear this, but.
Those.
I would rather see it go to an employee, invest in our employees, instead of investing in someone else, that's gonna be a short period of time. This is a short term.
But the thing, the thing is, I've been doing this for six years almost now, and I, and I see that you have an open, it's like a revolving door down there. Because the problem is, there's no benefits, there's no retirement, they're not full time, you're doing one's full time, and then we keep you, because you you gotta, you got a retirement plan with it. But these other guys who come in, they're looking at, I need, I'm between jobs, I need to fill it somewhere, uh, I I want a retirement job, I can work a little bit. Uh, I I have, I have a regular job, I just wanna work a few extra hours, but those people are gone now.
Right, however.
And that's why I, your, your proposal for another full timer, maybe we're there, maybe we need to do that. And that's, I'm throwing that on the table for us, because this part time crap is, and I say it's crap, because it's been a revolving door for six years. And you've been doing longer than me, you know it's a, a bigger revolving door.
So I'll throw another devil's advocate at you, is the fact that even if you bring these people on. And the E S rules state, you, the person, it used to be based off level to run that facility.
Right.
Now, it's, they've adjusted the rules, and it says it has to be a competent person. Well, to me, a new employee, it's not fair to them for me to go on vacation and say, okay, you run the show. It has, but so I'm saying, it has to be a competent person, so technically, until we have somebody competent in there. Technically, while the facility is open to the public, so I'm saying to the public, there has to be competent people there. Um, and I'm not saying that it can be taken out of concept, they have to be able to. Run that facility and not have issues with it, not be able to answer questions, be able to, they have to be competent to handle anything that comes up. When I'm not on site, that's why technically, until we have somebody else competent in there, I cannot take a vacation.
And that's not fair to you, and that's not fair to you. But it has, it's not fair to you, that's why I'm I'm go, I'm going down that path, and I agree with you.
So, I would go back to the whole money thing again, if, and I did it.
You keep saying money, but the two people that left you.
Yeah.
This spring, we're not gonna stay for another dollar or two an hour.
No.
Both those people were leaving anyway, and those are the best two we had.
Previous to that, those two.
Previous to that, some of those other guys had.
No, no, to those other, to those other two, they would've stayed, and we all know this, they would've stayed for the two dollars more an hour.
We don't, cause they had, they had underlying issues that affected.
No, no, not those two.
The current two?
One plus a different one.
Okay.
Would've stayed for additional two dollars an hour, we wouldn't even be having this conversation right now, we'd be home watching TV, but.
Uh, you say that, you know, in other talks I've had with them over the times, it's like they can work there for six months and they get frustrated with it. And they're gonna, they're gonna go off and do something else, and they're gonna come back next winter and be all happy again, it, it seems to be a cycle we're having.
Right, and I, we need to break that cycle, and it's nothing personal, the fact being is, there's no guarantee for me. And I get it, there's no guarantee across the board, but I'm running on, okay, I might have this person in the fall, maybe I gotta try and come up with these people. Everything today, anybody, uh, maybe you see it, Justin, I don't know, today's people don't care about long term. They care about the money right now, you know, the youngsters that are coming in, ask them if they care about retirement. Most of them are gonna tell you, don't care about retirement, we wanna see the money now, that's what they wanna see, they live now.
Thing is, I I I would have an agreement with that, because remember we did that, uh, just the, uh, incentive?
Yeah.
They, they wanted to see the more money in the paycheck, they couldn't understand that they were not paying taxes on this cycle.
I know, and I told, I was ready to get that from the beginning, I want it just in their paycheck.
But it was an opportunity to get to some.
But you gotta remember, that's in their paychecks now.
Right, right, right. Go ahead, Doug.
I mean, I s-. It's a two, a double edged sword, I mean, I, yeah, they are all about the money now, I, again, I'm paying people fifty percent more than I've ever paid. My life for a starter labor, but, um, I think we still have the hurdle of the hour, hours. I mean, are we against part time people that are only working maybe one day a week, as opposed to making somebody do the three days, or like what?
Thing is, I I, my feeling is, if someone wanna work one day a week, let's say a Saturday, and that's all they could work, welcome them.
Maybe just said yes on emails to that, somebody did, was it you, Lane, somebody said yes to it?
Well, that's when he's gonna be.
That's, I have interviews.
Saturday.
I mean, it's, I don't, you know, I do payroll for my business, it doesn't cost anymore to put them on payroll, you're still paying the same amount, whether you got. You know, ten separate employees that work eight hours, or one employee that works thirty-two, as long as you're not going, obviously into overtime. So I just, you know, maybe we open it up to more, maybe part timers that are working singular days, I don't know, I just wonder that.
Okay, well.
Without adjusting the fee schedule, can we get somebody like a retired person that wants to work the Tuesday, Wednesday days, but not the Saturday? Do we have other people we can hire for Saturdays?
I I'd say we gotta embrace that.
Try and run.
We're already doing it.
Yeah, I think, I think so.
Yeah.
I think this round here that you.
You might be, were included in the email when it was sent out.
Okay, um, but it's gonna be an issue, and the thing is, I think one of the biggest issues is, um, how, this guy's gotta go on vacation sometime.
Yeah, we have one person that we're keeping on the payroll, that is supposedly able to come down and run that facility. What's his name, Dana or somebody, who's the guy that we have? Remember, he only wants to come in. We have him on your, on your employee payroll list.
Are you talking about, um, Dave Nickerson?
Yeah.
Uh, he's just an on-call person, so.
Well, he never comes in, let's get off, get him off the list.
No, he comes, he he comes in, however, I'm guessing there's more to it than meets the eye, what happens down there.
How many months would it take to train someone to become, let's say, you're an assistant manager again, that's what we need, you need an assistant manager, someone who can cover.
Exactly.
When you're gone.
Now, you, you have that listed?
No, we didn't list that job yet.
No, well, but I have two openings, I posted for this, so, I, and then I put the range with the, um, um, attendant to assistant. So that in the event that person comes in, he says, oh, you're not an attendant scale, you should be an assistant, then let's look at this. Because I feel like two people, two openings, maybe we can get more, and we're getting a lot of inquiries this week.
Okay, so, let's.
What do we have posted right now? What do we have posted right now?
Two, oh, um, part-time attendant transfer stations with the wage scale of the step-one attendant and step-one of the assistant manager.
But it's not labeled as, as assistant manager?
No.
But it's on Indeed?
Yep.
Isn't that confusing?
Nope, it really isn't.
Why do you think it's not confusing?
Because we have, we need more than one person, okay?
Right, but I see an attendant coming in thinking he could potentially make this amount of money.
Well, he.
He could have had experience.
This is, this is, this is our job to let them know that what you're applying for is an attendant, and then if you don't qualify, this is where we're gonna start you at. Whereas if someone comes in and says, I got a C D L, I only want, wanna work Saturdays, I can, I've run this.
How are we gonna convince them to say that if we're not even asking them if that's a job that's available?
Oh, we are, there's a couple that have a C D L, if, um, have you met with that person yet?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yes, and it's.
So.
We'll talk about that in a minute. Yes.
Okay, so just following, we have a transfer station attendant part-time listed.
Two vacancies.
Two vacancies.
Yeah.
And you have their starting level.
Yep.
And you didn't go up to level three.
No, I went.
You went beyond that.
No, I, I posted a range, because if someone comes in, it's just like what your police.
So you're thinking somebody's gonna come in that's better than the job we're asking for?
That's right, someone who's retired and wants to.
Instead of listing that for a second job.
That's right.
I think we need to list that for a second job.
Where do you go?
Cause you're, you're running this low-end job, thinking you're gonna get somebody up here, makes no sense to me.
No, no, that's, I have a job for municipality that advertised, says that they, the range is when you're here.
Listen, if you, if you're looking for an accountant, you don't advertise for a bookkeeper. Okay?
Yeah.
So if we want somebody that's.
So what I think is asking for is a, a separate line, a separate one for assistant manager.
Yeah.
If we, if we need that job filled, that's what we should be asking for.
But I thought that we had a potential assistant manager coming back in the fall, so I'm.
Even if we do, that one's gonna be a part-time, it looks like always.
Well, I think.
Works those month-to-months and is gonna move on, whether it's frustration or whatever, then I think that's what's gonna happen.
I think what, um, trying to go through the little mud puddle here, um, I think what had happened with this, and I can't be a hundred percent sure. Is that there was potential that someone was gonna stay this time around. I think that's the only reason it's listed the way it is, was we, under the possibility he, this person was gonna stay.
Okay, um, I, I wanna talk about this in non-public, there's a, there's an offer I may wanna have you give to someone, and I'll talk about non-public.
And I have, also have one that I wanna bring to you, like, I only recently found out, okay, let's, um, thing is, let's, we're going in a circle here, so I wanna talk more de- in detail on, on, on some of the candidates we've had.
And you can give me your reaction when we get out of non-public, as to whether you want me to add.
Right, but let, let's hear the information about the, what the proposals were, so, thing is, let's go to the agenda again. And I'm gonna open up a public comment again, before we go, go ahead, Leo.
Um, so I'm just wondering if, uh, we're pursuing or not, uh, the parking issue here during the day. Cause my wife came to get sworn in and had a hard time parking the other day.
Okay, I'm gonna let the town manager help us with that one.
I've been buried and it's on my list of things to do, I know that Justin did remind me again today, and I may try to give the one. Once over to my assistant bookkeeper to write up a memo, to see how he does in, in drafting something and get a letter over there.
Two. Hold there, just maybe try and let him spread his wings in the same way he can. How about two memos?
Two memos.
Remember the one from right after the town meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Answer, okay. Okay, then, uh, mailbox, uh, I've got a couple comments closed.